The motion is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. McCormick, could you please call roll?
Yes. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Outridge?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Wayne?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Everyone's here.
Before we move on to the minutes, I'd like to mention that we've lost one of our almost 25-year members since our last meeting. Bill Shannon passed away, and it was a devastating loss. And then Bill for, I've been on the commission for almost 25, and Bill started shortly after I did. He was very always involved with his community, and he was a great person to have on the commission, and I'll certainly personally miss him, and I think most of the rest of us will as well. He had lost his wife a couple of months prior to his passing, and I think that was very devastating, and I can understand that. They'd been married, I believe, almost 70 years. Is that right, Mr. McCormick?
I think so, yeah.
And I think Bill had lost a lot of his spunk after that happened, but I'll miss Bill, and I really want to thank him and his family for all the service and the commitment that he gave to this community and his support.
Yeah. Well said.
All right. We'll move on for action on minutes. Does anybody have a change to the minutes? I believe we have a minor adjustment to make. We need to change on the second line. The meeting was called to order by myself and not Mr. Campbell. I believe that's the only change I saw. Mr. Campbell, do you see anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman. I believe that's the only change, and if that change is being made, I would move to approve the minutes contingent on that change.
I'll second.
Mr. McCormick, please call roll on the minutes.
Mr. Smith?
Abstain.
Mr. Outridge?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I don't believe we have any old business to open tonight, so we'll move on to the new business. Case 1-25T, a text amendment specifically dealing with the overlay plan expirations in Article 13 and Section 1311. Mr. McCormick, could you please provide us a synopsis or not?
Yes. So, we talked about this, I think, at our meeting that we had in February drafting up some changes. One of the changes we wanted to make was to have an acknowledged expiration on an approved overlay plan, and we put a couple of different options in here. And really, one of the main things is we want to determine when the expiration point should be. We could set it up to where the plan is good for one year, like a permit, and expires in the second year if work is not completed, with the ability for the applicant to ask for additional time if there's a good reason to do so and apply for that. Or, we can make the plan three years, and I think it would go, as far as to start to finish, up to five in a similar fashion that we do with PDs. I can tell you from the staff perspective, we were thinking the 1, 2, 3 was better than the 3, 4, 5, and I think that's what I heard the board say last time. But we did draft up both because those are the two most rational ways to deal with it, either treat it similar to a permit and the time period for a permit or a plan development, which is the 3, 4, 5. So, option 1 is the 3, 4, 5 essentially, and option 2 is the, you've got one year to start, two years to substantially do the work, and you can ask for potentially a one-year extension. Actually, I do, there was one thing that needed to be changed on option number 2, 1311. The intention was to say the overlay plan may be granted upon the request to the zoning director or his or her designee. I do remember that. We were trying to, that was the intent. And in my prior job, I did this quite a bit, and as long as you feel comfortable with the staff, I mean, we have a situation like this that happened here with the trustee case not long, I mean, a couple of years ago, Panda Express, and, you know, they came in, I don't think they really understood what was going to happen there at Glen SD with those 32. They got the overlay approved, then they found out all that construction work was going to be right there in front of them, and they were like, we don't know if we want to open with that right there in front of us. And so, they have been pushing it back, and we've worked with them on it, but we've kind of reached a point where they wanted to push it into next year, into the summer, and we were like, you know, no. I called ODOT. ODOT says that's going to be open around somewhere between July and October, so we want you to be working in that time period and be done, you know, prior to the end of the year, instead of pushing it all the way to next year again. And so, they have started to work there, and there's really not going to be a reason for them not to be open at that point because the work will be done. And in the end, it might end up saving them money because everything's going to cost more in six more months, right? So, and generally, when we have those kind of situations pop up, I'm not unilaterally always going to make that decision. I will consult with our administrator who's been in my job in the past, or I'm going to consult maybe our other staff or inspector, you know, make sure we're kind of treading the same kind of line with people, be inconsistent. The language really otherwise for these two, like, one is very much set up in the pattern of the overlay or the PD, which is option 1 for Section 1311, 1 through 5, which I provided packets up there for people to take a look at. But, you know, that's essentially what we're trying to do and acknowledge they, basically, the plan remains in effect unless it's otherwise changed, right? That's another important part. Whatever is not, whatever's been in compliance will be in compliance in the future. If it's, you know, potentially, we would have an enforcement process if the plan was not fully realized or achieved, the work had started, or if the use changed or what have you. Yeah. Planning and zoning director or his or her designee is what we reasoned on the other one, too. Option 2, other than making that change under number 1. We did note on this one, overlay plan must be completed within six months of building occupancy unless there's an extension granted. And again, we reference the zoning director or his or her designee to be consistent. Yep.
What confuses me a little bit is that option 1 reads completely different than option 2. I mean, there's a complete change, and not just the timing. It's, I found that option 2 is just very much more readable for me.
Yeah. So, option 1 is modeled after the plan development text that's in the code now and kind of borrows a lot of the same type of language from there. Option 2 is taken from a totally different model, and in my opinion, is probably the cleaner and better model. But if you were comfortable and you like the language that's in the PD, we were trying to, even if you don't like the timeframe, we were trying to give you, like, we can set it up similar to the PD, which in a lot of ways, they are similar in the way that they're looked at, or we can look at them this other way, which is the way that I'm used to looking at them in my prior job. And that was what I modeled after the second one. It was where I had pieced together and done work in my other work, not using the UT example.
Yep. Now, did you say there was something in option 2 that didn't end up being written as you intended it?
It was just under number 1 where it says, under the last line, a single one-year extension of an approved overlay plan may be granted upon request of the planning commission. That was supposed to say zoning director or his or her designee.
Oh, in 1311-1?
Yes. And the rest of that section, we caught it, we just didn't catch that one.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. Yeah, we would want to change that if we moved forward.
And then the only other thing on that one is if you get the number 3, changes or amendments, that one also acknowledges what you would do in a situation where there's significant It acknowledges that the drawings would need to be submitted, if there's been any violations of the permit, tests to material adversely affect the health, welfare, safety of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood or development site, and to be detrimental to public welfare injuries to property or improvements in the neighborhood, the zoning director or designee may suspend or revoke the improvement plan permit and may, we would probably need to change that, too, to say zoning permit.
Okay.
That particular terminology is from, is not Ohio terminology, that's why I say that. It's a minor thing, but it's probably necessary.
Are we looking, on these text amendments we're reviewing tonight, are we looking to make motions on these to prove the work?
If you're comfortable with them, we will forward the ones that are ready to go.
So, we would have to all agree on which option is preferred, and within that option, the changes, just to make sure that the changes we've discussed are recorded?
Yes.
And you've made notes on it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in favor of option 2.
I am, too.
I like the 1, 2, 3, and I like the easier read.
I do, too.
I'm in favor of option 2, just it seems concise, and it's in agreement with the zoning permit timeline, so I think the case thing's consistent, in my opinion.
What about you, Daniel?
No, I would agree with that. I like the tighter deadlines because, again, and this was referred to previously at an earlier meeting on the record when we were discussing these cases, and I believe we were talking about maybe a handful, two or three every year that kind of are getting carried over, and that's enough over the course of time. It's a substantial issue and a problem for zoning staff that has to be addressed, so I think option 2 properly addresses that. I do like the text in that it is easier to read. I do have a question for Mr. McCormick in terms of zoning director or his or her designee, which is used in both proposed options. How often, Mr. McCormick, does the zoning director select a designee, and what does that look like? Because I don't recall.
So, in the case of something like this, it could end up being the other planner in the office. It could also be the zoning inspector. It really depends on a number of things. One, what is the director's, what are the other people's knowledge and experience to be able to handle those things, and whether or not that duty needs to be delegated? I mean, sometimes the director is busy to the point where it's like, you know, if we have confidence that someone else can do the work, we might do that. I can tell you, I have delegated things like that before. If I have someone who I consider relatively kind of new to planning or to enforcement, I probably am not going to hand that off, whether that's an inspector or the planner. So, but if I do have a very capable inspector, and it's an enforcement-related issue, I can, you know, account on, in this case, Scott, to do that kind of work, to help me with it anyways. At some point, you know, maybe, let's say Blake's been here as a planner for, like, you know, another six months to a year, we're at a point where we feel capable of having him do that, and he's dealt with some similar issues, then yeah, I might have him do that as well. I would say I have done at least half of the ones where I could designate to somebody else historically. It all depends on who you have with your staff. If you have staff turnover or you have inexperienced people, you don't want to hand it off to somebody that doesn't, isn't going to be able to do it.
Okay. Thank you for addressing that, and part of us moving forward. I know there was an edit you wished to make to the proposed language, specifically the third paragraph.
Yeah, so 1311, change plan commission on the last line to zoning director or his or her designee on 1311 number 3, the second to last line regarding the suspension or revoking an approved, instead of improvement plan, I would put zoning permit. Improvement plan can still be used in Ohio, but it usually refers to a subdivision improvement plan, where we would want this to be more kind of broad and include commercial zoning permits, other zoning permits.
Right, yep.
In my previous job, improvement was, zoning permits in the state of Indiana were called improvement location permits, and so you would see that term used a lot more, and it's not that way in Ohio. And interestingly enough, if you really want to know the background of that code, this, the origination of what we're looking at was a Boone County code that Dearborn County used that I modified, and now I'm modifying it for an Ohio purpose. So, it's like truly tri-state now if we use it.
Mr. Chairman, I think I derailed you when I interrogated Mr. McCormick. I think you were going to ask Mr. Outridge his opinion on it.
And that's fine. It was additional information we needed to hear, and I'm not adverse to that. Mr. Outridge, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. It is definitely cleaner, and just with those minor language changes, yeah, I'm in favor of it.
I have a question on light of some new information that just came about. That was a great question regarding the zoning director and or his or her designee, yes. What are your thoughts on just eliminating it to the zoning director?
I agree with that, too.
And the only reason I say is it's an overlay case, you know, there has to be some, I think, some history with the case and some involvement that I think the zoning director in place would have that history and knowledge.
Yeah, it all would depend on the text, I mean, what it was that we were addressing, you know, whether it was something very complicated or something very simple. If it was just a minor modification, then I would think a designee would be appropriate. And then that's why I think, I don't believe Mr. McCormick would designate it out if it was a significant component of the plan that was being modified. I think if it was a simple placement of some type of landscaping or the size of something landscaping that was not as critical as moving a structure, would be, I think that's why it's in there.
Okay. Good point.
There would be communication between the staff still. Just because there would be a designation doesn't mean there wouldn't be communication between, or any involvement by the director or the other person, too. Because normally, you know, like, for example, I mean, I do have other people review plans, and it's the same process. I'm like, have a look at these, then we'll meet, sometimes I'll sit down with them, we'll review them together, sometimes I'll be like, all right, tell me what you see, I'm going to look at that, and then give you my feedback. It's kind of treated the same way. I wouldn't just blindly give somebody something that had nothing, no knowledge of it without, like, being part of the process. It would just be, you know, maybe to give them experience and to also save time while I'm trying to do something that might require a lot more time and attention for both purposes, maybe.
So, it really could go either way. I mean, it sounds like on the process, then. Okay.
Yeah. It does require a considerable degree of trust in our zoning director and our zoning staff, and in truth, we have a small zoning staff here that does a tremendous amount of work. I think under either scheme, we would be asked to be designating that authority, but right now, there is no such procedure in place. It's, you know, potentially limiting it to the zoning director, could be hamstringing a department that's already being asked to do a tremendous amount. We've not seen anything, any particular reason for caution. I think the language as is with the two proposed edits makes sense.
The other thing I would note is if someone were not happy with the way that process transpired, they could always, the procedure to appeal that would be to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals to say, hey, we don't like how this is happening. Then it could get appealed to the zoning appeals. I've only had that happen, I think, one time, and when I went to the Board of Zoning Appeals for that particular case, the board members after the meeting told me they thought that I did the right thing, and they ended up voting for the applicant to basically kind of get a variance, and then they told me what needs to happen is we needed to change the code, not for what I did, but for what the person was trying to get done. I forget exactly what he was trying to do, I remember where it was at, I remember who it was, but it was not a problem of what I was doing, it was a problem with the way the code was written and the application of what he wanted to do, if that makes sense. So, it wasn't like I, the procedure was wrong, it was more that the code that addressed his use was an issue. So, we ended up fixing that.
All right. Thank you. Before we move to a motion, is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak about this text amendment before we make a motion? All right. With no further, any discussion, any further discussion? All right. I'll make a motion on this particular amendment. Case 1-25T zoning resolution text amendment, the zoning commission finds that the proposed text amendment to the Union Township zoning resolution is consistent with the intent of the zoning resolution and comprehensive land use plan 2030. The text amendment's being considered to address overlay plan expirations and applied to Article 13, Section 1311 of our zoning resolution. The commission recommends the text amendment be adopted with the following recommendation. Modifications to the proposed text amendment were agreed upon by this commission. Those modifications, as recorded during our discussion of this case, are included in this motion. That concludes my motion. Do we have a?
A second.
No, I guess before a second, is there any additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to your motion, you may want to specify that you were specifically referring to option 2 that's been proposed.
But that's part of the discussion. That's why I'm keeping the text amendment simple. In the discussion, Mr. McCormick recorded option 2 as one of the recorded modifications. So, we, option 2 is a modification, and modifications to option 2 were recorded. That's why I wrote it that way. If you like it, to redraw it and indicate option 2, and then the separate modifications. But in our discussion, we all agreed that option 2 was the choice, and Mr. McCormick, you recorded that, is that correct?
Yes.
No, that's sufficient.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Mr. McCormick, please call roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Outridge?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. We have case 225T, which is the proposed table, figure for accessory structures, and there was some discussion about this individually before the meeting. So, we have two versions of this. One would be to add a whole other table, figure 2, section, Article 6, Section 602, specifically for accessory structures and uses, including compost, beekeeping, and chicken coops. And the option, that's version 1, or option 1, and version 2 is to take all of that information and consolidate within our existing figure 1, Article, I'm sorry, Article 6, that's a typo, Section 602, and include those towards the bottom, and just add the footnotes that you see there. The main thing is that the staff has had a lot of questions regarding the changes in the sections, Article 7, Section 711, and, you know, in terms of, like, the minimum acreage size and the amount of square feet that one is allotted for that, and the applicable setbacks, and the applicable setbacks for things like chickens, beekeeping, and so I mean, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
I like the second one. I mean, I like the version 1. Version 2 to me just seems like, let's see, is that on the second page? Yeah, version 2 is on the second page. There's just a lot, a lot in that table. To me, it just seems crowded, and there's a lot of NAs in there because there are columns that apply to the upper section, dealing with the zoning that do not apply to accessory structures. And so, when you have this accessory structure table separated, to me, it just looks a lot cleaner and a lot easier to read.
And these aren't new numbers, it's just the numbers that we adopted a year or so ago, or, you know, a lot of people are looking for those.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think it makes, for lots, an acre or less, which is probably the majority of requests, it simplifies the process of figuring out what you can do. I agree.
I'd like to state, I'm in favor of version 2 in the fact that I deal with a lot of zoning codes, I deal with it every day in my profession, and I love to be able to go through one page and find all the information on one page, and instead of having to research and go through a zoning code. So, for that reason, I'm in favor of version 2.
Well, they would be right next to each other. It would just be that, and the one, the table for the actual zones, the R3s, the R1s, that stays the same, then we have an additional table following it that deals with accessory structures. Currently, accessory structures do not have a table in the, in this section, Section 6.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just, again, I'm in favor of one table. Saves paper. Can't be missed.
Mr. Campbell, what are your thoughts?
I don't have a particular opinion on either. I enjoy both, I enjoy, you know, both of them potentially existing. I do like that the first figure, version 1, is cleaner, which is nice, and this is something that was brought up when Mr. Wayne and Mr. Outridge and myself were fortunate enough to attend a seminar that was put on for the purpose of zoning over an Anderson Township, and one of the presenters talked at length about revising zoning resolutions, which his company and he does across the country, and one of the, one of the major points of his talk was you should have images, you should have tables, you should have visual conceptions of what the measurements look like in your zoning resolutions for a number of reasons. One, it's, principally, it's easier for members of the public to pick up, look at, and understand, which cuts back on a lot of staff time because staff doesn't have to walk people through every specific iteration of the questions that they have. So, I'm in favor of either version, whatever the bulk of the commission believes is appropriate. I just, I enjoy, I enjoy the concept of having this in there, and I'd love for staff at their convenience to look for other opportunities to implement something like this, which is sort of a one-stop shop or at least a couple-page stop to get very basic information, as opposed to sorting through what is, not unlike many others, a complicated word salad of what appears just to be bureaucratic gobbledygook, which it isn't, of course, but this is helpful, and I enjoy it. I didn't just reveal something about myself there, did I?
No. I like the fact that, you know, deck, fence, pool, compost, beekeeping, chicken coops are all worked into this table, where with the combined table, none of that is able to fit in.
It's a footnote at the bottom.
Yeah, there's a footnote at the bottom, exactly. But this, I think it brings to light all the different things that are accessory structures. With a glance, you see, wow, this is an accessory structure, I really hadn't thought about that. And as we're getting, we've got a whole section now on chicken coops and zoning codes, so that's my opinion. Mr. Wayne, what are your thoughts?
I like both of them. Table 2 was the one I was leaning towards first because it's just, it's pretty comprehensive all in one thing. But again, it's a lot of information. I do like the fact that the zone districts are listed as well, though, because that's a lot of, when you're talking to people in general, when you say, we start talking about R1 or R2... or they have no clue what you're talking about half the time. So this would be something, like I said before the meeting, to a couple of these guys, if this gets pushed, you know, if we, this is approved by the trustees, this will go on my phone. As something I can just shoot to people instead of.
Well, the table, the upper part of this table is already in the code.
As a table?
Yes, yeah, version two, the upper part, it's already tenderized in the code.
So that's true, but it's, we, the other thing we did add was the minimum square footages associated with the structures, which is not currently in figure one. So that second option adds the minimum square footages for ER, R one, R two. Those are not currently in that table.
But we could modify that ta, that existing table to include that column, correct?
We, yeah, we could. But on the first, yes, we could modify the existing table to include that. And option, version one would be the second page and it wouldn't affect the, that version.
Right. I think that may be a, an optimal solution to do that. So you, you would update the first one. And then you would include essentially with a substantially figure, version one of figure two on the next page. And that gives you the best of both worlds, the right together. You've updated the first figure to include that information. And then you've kept accessory structures. Because if I'm looking for accessory structures, I'm flipping right to that. And then this has enough room to, to actually visualize the information. I think that's probably the best solution to this. And of course, anywhere we can put more tables.
Just so I understand, the, the current table that's Article six, section six oh two, figure one, would be modified to include minimum square footage?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And that, that column doesn't apply to accessory structures. So it's, it's just, I mean, I look at version two and there's a lot of NAs. And they're because they're columns that don't apply with the separate, because accessory structure is really kind of different column data than, than the zoning district. So that's, that's my thought. Mr. Outridge, what, what are your thoughts?
I'm in agreement with what was stated. I do have preferences for updating the version two table in there to include the minimum square footage and then including figure two under it. Or like on the next page, I like, I like that idea.
Now, Ms. McCormick, from a staff preference, would it be preferable for us to table this issue until they can be revised or?
I can take the minimum square footage from option two and put it in the existing figure one. And then figure two, we don't have to really change on option one, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, that's not a big change. I mean.
Unless, unless Doug has countered that. I mean, Doug, you mentioned that you wanted.
No, I'm fine with, I'm fine with what we just discussed.
Okay.
Yep. And I assume it's going to be one right after the other, correct?
Yeah, and they can get, they can get the job done. And to your point, Doug, we can make them front and back, so it could still be one.
There you go.
There you go. That's right.
So in this case that we've recorded, you've recorded these, these changes.
Yes.
I can simply reference them the same way in the motion that I did the previous motion.
Yes.
Does anyone from the audience have any comments on this? Oh, could you, do you have a form that you filled out to discuss this?
No, sir. I, I, I don't mean to throw wrench in anything, but.
Well, I, I need, I'm sorry, I need you to come up to the podium and, and tell us at least who you are.
Seriously?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's the only way it works.
I just got finished tearing up a hot tub, I'm dirty.
Hopefully being replaced by another hot tub.
No. Question, first question for you. Are you Daniel Campbell that went to school with Alex Paget?
Yes.
I'm his mother.
Oh, honey.
And there's his father.
Very nice to see you.
It's good to see you.
You guys look familiar.
I'm Joanne Paget. I live in Shana Clear Woods. And that's what we thought was going to happen today was, because the, the flyer that we got said zoning meeting was tonight. And so, you know, we were.
Oh, we're not, we're not addressing a specific case tonight. It's all text amendments.
So how, when, when will you do that? I mean, how will we know?
So, um, that development group that met with you, right?
Mm-hmm.
They, I think, are walking away from that whole thing. Now, having said that, I have had a number of people call me. And, you know, with the people who own it being interested in potentially selling it.
DLs?
They're likely to sell it. It's just a matter to who and how it could be part of the people that live around there. I don't know.
Sure.
And everybody could, you know, buy it, divvy up their parts and do that. But I believe that the, the option has lapsed because I have had other companies call me and ask about it. So I did hear that the meeting didn't go well. We did have someone in the room.
Yeah, we did not.
And, and he was just kind of observing. And, and we were there really for, to observe and to also just be there for technical support to make sure that the meeting went okay with that part of it. But, um, yeah, they never presented anything to us as far as an application. So we don't, we don't have anything in hand to review for that property. I don't know. I mean, if we get something, it's probably going to be in a month or two. But when we do, we'll notify everybody that it touches and then everybody within two hundred feet of that.
Okay.
And we'll put up signs and it'll be in the newspaper and it'll be on the website.
Okay. That's all I ask is so that we're informed and know when to show up.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Dan.
It was good to see you, yes. And if, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you don't have to.
That's what I was just going to ask you.
Yeah, no, you're welcome to, to leave. That would be no problem.
Thank you very much.
It might be very boring.
Good evening.
Thank you. All right, I'll, I'll make a motion on this, this case in similar fashion to the other one. Case two dash twenty-five dash T zoning resolution text amendment. The zoning commission finds that the proposed text amendment to the Union Township zoning resolution is consistent with the intent of the zoning resolution and the comprehensive land use plan 2030. The text amendment's being considered to address accessory structures and apply to Article six, section six oh two of our zoning resolution. This commission recommends the text amendment to be adopted with the following recommendation. Modifications to the proposed text amendment were agreed upon by this commission. Those modifications, as reported during our discussion of this case, are included in this motion. That completes my motion. Is there any other discussion? That's, because you made an important, that was an important point that you made on the first one. I just wanted to be sure that we.
No, I, I, I didn't interpret what had happened earlier in the meeting as a modification. But it was, it was clarified both with staff and with yourself, so I don't have an issue.
All right. All right, Mr. Wing, did you want to make a second? Uh, Mr. McCormick, please call roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Outridge?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes. We chose the option one to be added as a second table. And the existing table, we are going to add for the zoning districts that are listed ER through PD. We're going to add for the first three districts, this minimum square footage of the structures. That's not in there now. So there will be two tables instead of one. Version one will be, will not have the part at the very bottom, but it will add this minimum square footage side of the column. And then the version two will be the page after that. And then now we're on to case three twenty-five T, which is regarding additional lighting standards. Currently, we have very relaxed lighting requirements. We have a requirement for one to submit a photometric or lighting plan, but then we don't actually have the numbers that we tell people we want to use at all. Our administrator, who was in this position previously, had worked on a lighting code when he was in Loveland. And I had some lighting code stuff that I had dealt with my prior job. And what we kind of did is melded them. So the Loveland code was quite long. We did try to pare that down a little bit because it seemed a bit more than what we really needed. So I think we ended up with like maybe five-ish pages. And it was more than that. And then what I had used was like a page, but we kind of married them together. And so I'll just go over that kind of quickly. So section five forty, usually when we're adding a new section of code, you acknowledge what the purpose is, right? And that's what this is for. And it's the purpose of this section and up to five forty-eight. And so from five forty to five forty-eight would be related to lighting, okay? And we put it in that section of code because we thought that that was more appropriate because it dealt with things like nuisances. And this is really more of a nuisance-related item, in my opinion. It could have also been dropped in Article seven. We chose five, Article five, and, you know, we're looking at public health, wealth, welfare, safety, intend to preserve privacy, protect priv, property from light trespass, improve safety, enhance and protect the physical appearance of the community, preserve scenic and natural beauty by reducing light pollution, reducing cost, distraction and so forth. And then five forty-one, we acknowledge lighting that would be excluded with no permit necessary. That would be things like governmental function items, like street lamps, lights, stoplights. Prohibited lights are things in five forty-two, such as off-premise lighting, searchlights, LED strip lighting, sag lens lighting, laser source or other high-intensity lighting prohibit, is prohibited. General requirements for all zoning districts and lighting is in five forty-three. These apply to all districts. And then we noted for additional rules regarding signage refer to Article nine because there are some things in Article nine for signage. It does touch on lighting a little bit. And instead of re-referencing those, we just said, please refer to Article nine. Article nine's not that long. So general requirements, the, any lighting shall employ only light emitting light of constant intensity, so they're not blinking, flashing, rotating, intermittent, moving lights. Source has to be directed and beamed. Let's see. No, so they can't be beamed on the public thoroughfare highway, highway sidewalk or cause glare that may constitute a traffic nuisance or, or hazard other than, you know, like if it's like a street light, it's allowed to be there. But there, the idea is to not project from the property. Like, for example, a gas station or car wash, a lot of times have a lot of lighting. And we do not want the light leaving the property in such a manner that it's like clearly leaving the property and getting into those areas and causing like a, you know, people to shield their eyes or turn away. Number two is basically just saying we're going to follow building codes for all lighting. Number three is, design, all lighting shall be designed to support to carry the weight of itself and built with local code in effect. Four, lighting should be secure in the manner to present significant movement due to wind. Five, light trespass is prohibited. And in no instance shall any ground-mounted flood or spotlight directing direct light onto adjacent street or right-of-way walkway, et cetera, adjacent property be used. No wall-mounted, six, no wall-mounted projecting lighting shall be erected from the front or face of a building more than two feet away of any, including any theater, hotel or marquee.
No, I have a question on, on that. And I'm, anybody that, as we get to it, there's a lot in, in this section. And so when we get to that section, if anybody has a question on it, feel, this is open discussion, so feel free to, to make a.
And there is a provision in here later that allows for variances, and I'll come to that because there are parts in here where people might, in certain instances, say, well, you know what? Like for this example, one here, we're not really admitting, we're not causing a problem, but we might need a little more than two feet or whatever, you know?
Yeah, my, my specifically, this, this section, five forty-three, says it's for all zoning districts, which means residential as well. And what I've seen a lot in, in some residential streets, and mine included, is people putting these floodlights up on telephone poles. I mean, they're way up on the pole. I guess they have something, the electric company puts a fee to it, they pay for the electric to it, but they're on the, they're on a utility pole. And they, when they, when they go on, they flood the street, they flood the yard, they flood adjacent yards. So there's, there's overlap there. And then here it specifically, you know, talks about it not shining on, on streets. What's, what's been the stance in the township?
So the township has lighting districts, but we also have instances, I think, where people have gotten with the utility provider like Duke to have a light installed. We have one instance where someone's been complaining that the light was too bright after one neighbor was saying it wasn't bright enough. And if it's, it depends on where it's, where it's located at and who put it there. If it's a Duke pole, we may or may not have the ability to influence what they've done. It depends on the location of it and who's maintaining and paying for it. So that, it depends. Usually if we contact Duke and we have a problem, they'll, you know, address the problem if it's like a lighting issue, it's too bright or whatever. We've only had one of those that I can remember in the time that I've been dealing with this, with this kind of thing. In my previous experience, I have had lighting complaints, but they were never about what we're talking about. They were more like the cell tower. When the light goes out at the top, it turns into that bright flashing light and that is a problem. And that's the reason why they do that is because that red light or whatever at the top is out and that white beacon is telling them they need to replace it. And that can go on for a while. And if you're the unlucky person that lives on the hill that used to have a great view and stars at night, and all of a sudden you got this bright beacon light going off, like it's a real pain, you know? You got to close your windows. It's like, I have had to go out and check stuff like that. And then the floodlights that people put out on their own property, we get complaints about that quite often. But, but, and people can put lighting that has a similar effect, but they need to make sure it's facing down and not towards the neighbor. So it's really not that hard. It just needs to learn to like not have it facing outward. It needs to be down. And they can, even if it faced outward and it shielded a little bit, as long as it's not leaving the property, you know, in a substantial manner, that's kind of the key. So there's.
When it's thirty feet up on a pole, downward, it covers a large area.
But they could still shield it pretty well at a, at a higher elevation. But, you know, yeah, if you're thirty feet up in the air, it's quite different.
Well, wouldn't that be in violation of exceeding the height requirement?
For a pole, if it's on a utility pole, maybe not. If it's, yeah, it depends. If it's on a utility pole, so a lot of those poles are probably in the neighborhood of that height unless they're the ones over Ivy Point or whatever.
All right, I just, I, I don't want to slow this process down. I just wanted to verify that this section does apply to residential and, as well as to, to.
And this is one out of all the ones we've worked on that I thought if, if it's not ready, we can work on it because it is a little more involved. We are going to be working on the landscaping one. I just, that one's going to be a bigger one. And it is going to have diagram, it is going to have a diagram in there of the visual of what the buffer yards are going to look like. But that one's probably going to take a little time to get through, too. But I, I put a whole lot of work into the one that I did previously and I think that's a good one. We might have to tweak it a little bit, but that'll be probably one of the next sets that we give you. Number eight, no temporary or portable lighting device should be placed on any building or any premises without, with exception to properties of residential use. But even if it's a residential use, if it's very temporary, we're probably not going to go out there and cite something that's only going to be out there a couple of days. You know what I mean?
Right.
No lighting should be attached to any, to or supported by a tree, utility pole, public shelter, with exception to properties within residential districts. Not really sure.
Well, there's utility pole.
Yeah. Might, if we're, if we end up tableing that, might.
With the exception of properties within residential districts.
Yeah. For lighting devices found to be cause of issue, not specifically listed above, the zoning director, his or her designated, may grant reasonable accommodation. That's for minor things, not for, you know, things that might be a bigger deal that need to be brought to a, a board. Requirements for lighting in residential districts and subdivisions specifically. Now, these would be above and beyond your general requirements that we just went through.
Can, can we step back to number nine in the previous section? No lighting shall be attached to or supported by a tree, utility pole or public shelter. Again, not residential, but for instance, like at, at the nature center or a park, there's a lighting, I, I know we've got lighting up on poles and, and attached to shelters. And how would this, would that make all of these in violation?
No, they would be pre-existing non-conformity if they were already in existence.
Well, and there are section two that states that, that public entity is exempt from this.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, there are exceptions, you know, I mean, the Cincinnati Nature Center's kind of an odd.
They're not public.
Yeah, they're not public, but at the same time, they're not a normal entity.
And I'm not saying I disagree with the lighting that they've put up, I, I understand that, I'm just, I'm a little surprised that that is in there, because parks, again, parks are public, but, yeah, I, I, I'm good, we can move on to five forty-four.
Five forty-four, residential lighting in subdivisions, including subdivisions, all lighting devices within the subdivision shall be in accordance with all the building codes, basically, and electrical codes. All lighting shall be downward-directed and shielded, so all light is downward-directed. Lighting devices shall be dark sky compliant and in accordance with International Dark Sky Association standards. Temporary lighting, lawn or yard lights, landscape light, lamp posts, other similar items of nature shall be classified as lawn ornaments and regulated as such in Article S, as, in accordance with Article seven, section seven, eleven, twelve, in this order.
So what does order mean?
That's another term for like, the code.
Oh, the zoning code, is that a resolution?
Yep. I could put resolution.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, I, I circled that as well.
Yeah, let's change that.
Lawyers like to use that term, so I was trying not, I don't try to be repetitive with the same word. Like, I don't want to end always with resolutions, so I've used the other things I've seen people use, like order, or I'll just say, in accordance with this article, right? That would be the other thing to shift to. All other lighting not specifically provided for here and is prohibited. And then, five forty-five, requirements for lighting in commercial industrial districts. Any exterior pole lighting, canopy lighting shall be flat lensed, designed, and shielded, so it's downward-directed, sagged lens lighting is prohibited, or property of commercial use adjoining or is within one hundred and fifty feet of residential zone, lighting shall be directed away from the residential property. Any building mounting lighting shall contain shields-directed lighting downward preventing spillover on the adjoining property. If within fifty feet of the residential zone, building mounted lighting facing the residential property shall be installed no higher than four feet from grade. And again, we make people do lighting and photometric plans in those scenarios, so that's not like there isn't a way that they, like, this is what we want people to do, but if they really need to do something else, as long as we're able to look at that plan and see that those numbers that I'm going to show you here in a minute are being met, that's really what we're after.
Okay.
And I don't really know how off, how, how we, how much we really need this particular part of this code, because really the table on the next page kind of does the job, in my opinion.
Well, I, I was going to state that, in general, I, I think this, this language here is just too wordy.
Yeah.
It's just too much, and that it can be regulated with intensity and foot candles.
That's what I, that's what I'm used to, and that's what I use in that table on the next page.
Yeah, and I, I can go on, but, that's fine, I, I've got, in general, I just, I agree with Mr. Campbell, I think photographs or pictures and foot candles and limited language could really do a lot for this section.
There's, there, so there's a couple of different measurements, foot candles are one of them, there's another one that's like a bug measurement, right? And I think that has to do with like, not only the lighting intensity, but the color of it or whatever, which I'm less familiar with, and I, I've learned a little bit about that, Corey, our administrator. But, basically, I mean, if you kind of want to skip ahead to the next page, that table here, we could use, we could modify this table and essentially make people present us plans that are in line with this table. And you would just have to add, for residential areas, this is what it needs to be, for active, you know, road right-of-ways or whatever, this is what needs to be. I usually say on the table that for residential uses, you have to be at, you know, one foot candle at the roadway or less. And the only stipulation I will make to that, is when I'm talking to people now, is if you cannot meet that condition because there's an existing light that you have no control over, I will let that slide. But if that light's ever replaced, it needs to be lower than what it is now. Because sometimes the lighting is not their problem, right? Kind of like a stormwater issue, like, you don't want to take care of what's on your property, you know, what's, what's within your control. But we could make it so that the table really kind of does the job, and by, by making them submitting lighting plans, that would take care of a lot of it. It will not necessarily take care of the issue of the subdivisions or residential lighting, because we don't get lighting plans from them.
Right.
And we can ask for the lighting detail, but at the same time, it also has to deal, do with how they install the light. So there, I do feel like for commercial, industrial, institutional plans, where we can ask for the lighting plan, this kind of thing could do it without having all that extra text, but for the residential improvements, we need something
Right, right.
That doesn't have this, because we don't have the ability to send somebody out there, first of all, it's at night, so you're going to send somebody out there beyond reasonable hours to work, and then you have to give them something to measure that, and we don't have, I don't think we have that.
Yeah.
So.
I can say, other, some other municipalities, I mean, I've seen zero foot candles at the property line, you know, so, you know, that would eliminate a lot of this, if, and in a residential district, that, that could be implied, you know, that if you, if you get zero foot candles at the, at the property line, you, you're really not affecting anybody, your neighbors or anybody, so.
Yeah, I mean, point five and point eight are pretty small, I mean, you get a lot of neighborhoods where they put those little, between your light up by the house and your solar lights, and your houses are close together, you're probably hitting that on your lots, where the houses are close to each other. So somewhere between point five-ish
Yep.
Is maybe more reasonable for the houses. But again, you got to have the ability to track that, and on an individual plan for a house, you're not going to ask them to do a photometric for the house. And even if you did, when they install the lights a year or two later, they're probably not going to come in for a plan, right? We just need something.
But if they're in violation, then you would have some teeth to, to at least govern or control that if it did become an issue.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest problem with the residential lights is that they're not downward-directed and shielded, and they are facing outward, and that's pretty easy to determine. So, I'm happy to sit on this one for a while and have you guys tell me what to mark up, because I mean, I know when I initially started looking at this, I was like, man, you know, we, we were able to do this pretty much with one page, and it, it got the job done, but at the same time, I could see why we might need a couple of pages to do it.
Yeah, I can tell you, I just recently worked in, in Delhi Township, and they have a consolidated section for lighting, that, two pages.
Is it good?
It's good.
We can check it out.
I'll send it to you.
Because there's many different ways to do it.
Yeah, there are, there are. It has, is, has diagrams and, and things of that nature, a table similar to this. Another thing I, I guess I have in here is, is, you know, I, I circled, you know, who's going to be the one to determine whether an entrance is active or inactive? You know, who's going to determine if something's, about what's a vital location? You know, those are ambiguous words that are hard to, to define or even create, you know, or, you know, to put, you know, yeah, that's a, that's an active entrance when that's not, it's an inactive entrance. So I think that wording, and, and that's got to, in my opinion, that's just too ambiguous. And then, two, I, I wouldn't use average foot candles, that, that's a hard number, you know, you, you know, you got the heat of the light, you got high-intense numbers here, large numbers out there, and if they meet point five, and they're still, you know, affecting a property line or something, you know, I, I just don't think the word average is.
So you want to say maximum foot candles?
I would.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not comfortable losing the, the text on the requirements for lighting in residential districts and subdivisions, we're only talking about a couple paragraphs and the.
And then, with regards to subdivisions, I mean, there are commercial subdivisions, there's just not residential subdivisions, so, you know, what's?
Define a commercial subdivision, please.
Ivy tech.
Or, like, the commerce park or whatever.
We don't send out a subdivision, I mean, that's, that's an office park.
It's a subdivision, you go to, you go to the recorder's office, it's a subdivision block.
Yeah.
It's a public street with a subdivision.
But is, there's a difference between residential subdivision?
Well, I know, I, I'm just saying that this, this says subdivision, so.
Be clear about it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, other than that table, the only thing we had left is maintenance, which is not probably bad, it's not a bad idea to have that in there. All lighting to be maintained safe and sound, structural condition at all times, be presentable. Zoning director designated shall cause to be removed any lighting found to be unsafe or structurally unsound after giving notification. If it's highly unsafe, I don't even know if we want to give them thirty days. I know the thirty-day rule probably has to do with the second notice that we sent out for enforcement, but if it's inherently unsafe, that we would probably do something quicker. Nonconformities and violations, five forty-seven. Lighting in existence parity effective date of this resolution, which violates or otherwise is not, that needs to be changed, in conformity with the provisions of this article, shall be deemed to be nonconforming. Any such nonconforming lighting shall be maintained in accordance with the provisions of Article ten of this resolution. That doesn't seem right. Oh, yes, Article ten for nonconforming. Burden of establishing legal nonconforming status shall be upon the owner of the lighting. Replacement of non-functioning light bulbs shall not constitute a loss of a legal nonconforming status. Last, for variances, the board of zoning appeals may grant a variance for any requirement of this article if it determines that such action is warranted, given the nature of the individual project, and that such action will serve to preserve the purpose and intent of these regulations. So, I, we're, you're going to help me find Delhi.
I'll send it to you.
And then, I think we probably still need the general purpose and intent section.
Yeah.
Probably still need lighting excluded, no permit required of some sort, prohibited lighting. General requirements, we may have to kind of retool some of those, is what it sounds like. Requirements for residential lighting is of particular concern, and maybe some tweaks to that.
Yeah, I don't know, what would you tweak in, in five forty? It's clearly residential districts and subdivisions, and it's not, it's, it's three, four, four line items, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
The one modification we made, remove order and change it to zoning resolution.
Yeah, and number nine, I'm still kind of wrestling with number nine.
Oh, in the previous section?
On five forty-three.
I, I do know other lighting districts, lighting regulations address cutoff lights and non-cutoff lights, I don't know if you want to look at that as well. They give definition of both or a picture of both, and then they have certain require, height requirements for non-cutoff versus cutoff, so.
What's that, does that mean?
A cut, a cutoff means it's a, it's got a hood on it, it directs straight down, non-cutoff is a big globe
Oh, okay.
Where it just goes straight out.
Yeah, that's where you get the.
And then that height, height, there's height variations for both.
Okay. That's where you get the downward-directed and shielded.
Yeah, and, and I must say, with LED lighting today, it, you know, it's, it's very easy to control lighting, it's a lot easier than it was back ten years ago to control lighting, so it's nothing that can't be done, in my opinion.
Well, you guys have given me enough feedback that we might be able to throw even more than one option together with some of these things, and bring them back to you guys next month, and then, or next meeting, and then, you know, if I get them out early enough, you guys can hit me up before the meeting and, and say what your comments are, we might be able to head off some of those stuff ahead of time. This was the one I figured we were going to talk the most about anyways, which was the reason I didn't throw anything heavier after this.
Yeah, let's, we won't move on this one tonight, and we'll let you work on what we discussed, and then we'll take another.
And if you think of something after this, and looking this over, please send it to me, and in the meantime, I, we'll, we'll look around a little more. I, I would like to see something ideally like three pages or less, I think it just would make it easier.
Does this address residential motion lights? Because I know, I hear a lot of complaints when the neighbor puts up motion lights, and is there?
They're not bad if they're not directed where they're
Right, right.
Outside the property, because we have one where I'm at.
Do we, I mean, do we, we don't have any ordinance right now, it's a nuisance, but if you have a problem, you call the police.
Yeah, it, well, we get calls about it, but we don't really have a code that says it's a problem. I mean, it would have to be pretty egregious.
I had one that was just shining, it was straight into my house.
Yeah.
I fixed it though.
Yeah, usually those end up getting taken care of one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. McCormick, I have a question, is, is, why wouldn't you just create a whole new article called lighting?
Um, I have not seen someone go to the link that put together a whole new article on lighting. It's usually considered a component of one of the other things in the code, could be related to parking and transport, and/or transportation, or our land, or even landscaping.
Yeah, I, I, in my opinion, I, I would even think it'd be a whole new article or fall under Article seven, I think.
That was the other one we looked at, yep.
I'm not, I mean, I just thought.
Yeah, honestly, I don't care how it's in there, as long as we get it in there.
Yes.
So, so we'll just table that one, and I don't think we necessarily need a motion on that one, since it's not necessarily going to move forward, but we'll keep working on it.
All right. I just had one small thing, and probably not necessary if we're regulating foot candles at the property line. This just came up briefly with a case earlier regarding timing of lights. Is that anything we need to consider?
I mean, normally you don't see people turning them on unless it's night, like, dark outside, or the only reason why they'll otherwise come on is if they're motion-sensitive and you got like a dark storm front coming in or the eclipse, right? Because that did happen when the eclipse happened for a minute. But, that's pretty much it, they're usually on when it's dark, which is night.
If they're on during the day, it's really not a problem.
Usually, I mean, it would have to be something really obnoxious. I mean.
Yeah, it, it'd have to be really obnoxious.
Yeah.
Considering people don't want to see traffic lights, so.
Yeah. We make rules for as much stuff as we can, but, I mean, it, we're never going to cover things a hundred percent. I mean, I would say our rules probably address about ninety-eight percent. I would say higher, but I don't think it's quite that high.
Before, yes?
I was just going to say, before moving forward with the next case, at this point of order, Mr. Chairman, do we need a formal motion to table this?
Now, this was slated as a discussion only, we, we just bumped in that, once we, our discussions determined that we were confident and, and comfortable with the, with the text being presented, we made motions, but otherwise, they, their issues rested as a discussion decision.
Thank you.
Okay, the last one we have drafted, and this is really a Band-Aid, because we probably need some major work on this one, too, we're just trying to address the biggest things that we have a problem with right now with signage. And Article nine, for those that are following at home, case four twenty-five T, we have discrepancies in the zoning code in Article nine for height of signs versus, particularly in commercial industrial areas, and that's pretty much all the overlay districts versus what's in the zoning code. So the overlay districts in general, you're not going to see signage allowed to be higher than twelve feet. But in the zoning code, it allows for signage to be up to thirty feet. So we have tremendous differences, right? So the first thing we want to change is in section nine oh seven, for signs permitted in commercial and industrial districts. We want number two to say freestanding signs on on-premise, freestanding on-premise signs not over twelve feet in height may be erected to serve business establishments, unless otherwise authorized by the union township board's trustees as part of the authorization of an overlay plan, or the union township board of zoning appeals as part of the authorization of a variance, in accordance with the, with the overlay district in which it is located and the policies and requirements set forth in the union township comprehensive plan. More than likely, this is going to be a overlay plan, that someone's going to come in and ask for this. But we did allow for it to be taken care of as a BZA item. I suppose if the only issue were the sign, they might just go to the board of zoning appeals. I mean, it depends, they could. I mean, it depends. They could realistically make the case to either board. We were just acknowledging that they could. But the biggest problem that we have is that we have thirty-foot reference in the current code. We don't, we aren't wanting thirty-foot signs, and the only one that I'm aware of that is, has been that big since I started here is to, we've allowed the, if it ever gets built, the new Kroger to have a thirty-foot sign out there by Escape Mall. Everything else I've seen come in here has probably been under twelve feet, and everybody's been, and been okay to deal with it. The only, the only other one that might, I don't think they have a freestanding sign that high. There might be one over Ivy Point now or in the future between, um, TQL or Children's. But that was, I think, built into a development agreement that was done when they attracted them to that area in the first place. So it's more the exception than the rule, for sure. The other one that we were looking at are off-premise signs. Right now, off-premise signs can be placed very easily in the township, and I don't think people realize how easily they can be placed in the, in the township, so we're trying to make it not so easy. Um, number three, off-premise signs shall not exceed twelve feet in height, so we're keeping the height consistent. Unless they want to come in and ask for a full-fledged billboard, in which case they need to come in and go through Board of Zoning Appeals process, which is the next part of that. Outdoor advertising, so, off-premise signs classified are classified as a business use and may be authorized by either Board of Trustees or part, as part of the authorization of an overlay plan or the Board of Zoning Appeals as part of the authorization of a variance in all commercial or industrial zoning districts. And really, in my opinion, probably what they should be is a, is a conditional use, and we need to change all the parts of the zoning code that might allow an off-premise sign like, and that, for example, they would probably show up in your commercial and industrial areas, but they would probably also be included in your state residential in certain areas, right? And perhaps even a PD in certain areas. So, in the absence of fixing the entire zoning code, the main issue we're trying to get fixed for now with the Band-Aid, so we're not having major flare-ups, is the height of the sign to be consistent. And off-premise signs, we're trying to tamp them down from being like these things that could pop up everywhere, because they, they literally can. It would be, I, I mean, even our sign allowances are pretty high, I think. I mean, that's another thing we needed to address. But instead of tackling that whole code, because that's gonna be another big apple to take some bites out of, like, this was the more immediate thing to address. So we were trying to at least stop the worst things that we're dealing with for the moment.
Doug, your thoughts on this?
I, I, I'm in favor of it. I, I think it's, it's reasonable, it's good. I have no comments. I kinda like, like the thought.
Okay. Mr. Outrich?
I'm in agreement. I like consistency.
Mr. Wayne?
Yep, I'm good.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, it makes sense to do this right.
I, I agree. I'm, we can make a motion on this one. We can move forward with this.
Okay.
This is a simple one.
Yep.
Case four dash twenty-five T zoning resolution text amendment. Zoning Commission finds that the proposed text amendment to the Union Township zoning resolution is consistent with the intent of the zoning resolution and the comprehensive land use plan. The text amendment being considered to address signage height and applied to Article nine, section nine oh seven of our zoning resolution. This commission recommends the text amendments be adopted. That concludes my motion.
I'll second.
I, I, we're supposed to have a discussion, I, before a second comes and I, I, and we already had the discussion. Typically, though, with, with cases, there's more involved in, in the motion. This was a very simple motion, so I think we're fine moving forward with the second. So, uh, Mr. McCormick, please call roll.
Sure. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Outrich?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes what we had on the agenda for tonight. As I said, um, we are gonna be working on landscaping. Some of that, even though it may be a longer read, and I would argue that definitely could have its own portion of the code. What you're gonna find is, I, I would advocate we should add a list of unacceptable plants, like I think I told you in the past. And I spent a lot of time looking at a lot of different resources and identified fruit and nut-bearing trees. That you can buy the fruit and nut-bearing trees, and, and they don't have the fruit and nuts that they drop or whatever. Their particular cultivar or whatever. And then there are just your weak wooded ones, and then you have the ones that are like the ash where they just can't be, until they get rid of the borer, you know, you can't really plant them. So there's a reason for them, and people could still put them on their property if they want. They just don't, we don't want them near right-ofways or drainage areas that are being maintained, that kind of stuff. Um, so that takes up a good portion towards the back part of it, and then we would define buffer yards in certain scenarios. So if, you know, your higher density intensity versus like your low to medium moderate density residential or ER, like it's, you know, if you put industrial or intensive or commercial intensive next to an ER area, you obviously need to have a different buffer yard. And usually what we're doing is trying to define two or more options for you to know what to do if you're the one coming in. And also gives the people that are reviewing it on the other side options of what they feel more comfortable with. And it's written in such a way that there's always another option that we can consider to be equal to those other options if, if we're presented with them. And we can credit existing landscaping if, you know, as long as it's not junk.
Will we give them a, a list of, these, these are what we consider appropriate, appropriate plantings?
That would be a whole other task that we could undertake. I think we could do that. We would probably want to work with like the agricultural extension type people around here.
Well, like I, like I said before, Rich, Rich Glisten on the Parks and Rec Committee, I believe is an arborist. And he expressed a desire to help with something like that. So, it just, it makes it easier for somebody coming in to say, well, they allow this, so let's just use that.
Yeah, that's the guy, that's the guy
There's so many plants out there now.
That's the guy in the park committee, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also have, um, at work I have a copy of the City of Crestview Hills. They have tree plantings for street trees, and they have different guidance on the side, on the size of trees, um, the spacing needed for everything to grow effectively. I can bring that in also.
Sure. Yeah, or, um, shoot me a reference for that.
I, I can say, um, that's probably, in, in some municipalities, uh, and I know there's a fine line there. You want to create enough plant material that you have a substantial buffer. But I've gone across some municipalities where that the density of trees and plants is so significant. It's physically, it's hard to even plant them and do, so there has to be some practical sense in that too. And, and I, I'd be happy to, you know, a landscape architect we work with, quite frankly, look quite a lot, you know, I could, he could help in any way with relationship of plant sizing or densities that, yeah, it still give you a nice buffer, but yet can be achieved, you know. I know there's some municipalities, Sycamore Township comes to mind, that it's, it's, it's really, uh, impractical to, to plant that many trees in such a small area.
Yeah, that was the reason why we changed our code where I worked previously, because whoever came up with the code obviously wasn't a landscape person.
Yeah.
And so they were trying to put too many plants in there. You couldn't really make it happen. We were always giving people reductions, and so I worked with the, I don't know if it was the state arborist, one of the main people in the state on, on putting that together. And I also used someone relatively local to look at it too, and I think that's a good thing to do. You know, so if you know someone and Rob knows someone, um, it's not a bad thing to do that, because you don't want to make it's, you know, like we had something we received by email today where they were, like, the guy was being told by one of the county reps on a project to potentially plant three feet apart, all these different trees and bushes and, and to have three rows of them, and it's like, I don't really think that's possible, and I'm not even an expert on that, but like, you know, everything tried to go, grow that close together and have wa- like, it just seems like it's not really feasible. Um, and that's not our intent, right?
Right.
It's a waste of money. We don't want everything to die.
Right.
So, that is definitely gonna be part of it, but if we're gonna list plants that we, that we would recommend, the other thing to keep in mind is we have to pick something that's probably more recommended to be native too, which is a whole different discussion.
I have a great website for you for that.
Yeah. But we, we, we have a, kind of a good starting point, but I realize we may have to make some changes to it. But I mean, I spent a tremendous amount of time working on the one that I did a few years ago. And it's, it's at least a pretty good starting point. We might be able to meld it with some other ones, but like, to your point, I don't want to like overdo it. So, and then, I know there's some other things we had on our list, and I didn't mark those other ones. I just didn't want to overload us on, on the meeting. So there are a couple other ones that we marked that I was gonna bring in. Um, depending on how hard it is to do the landscaping, we may bring those other ones in and just bring landscaping in separately, because that's probably gonna be a bigger one. And I know Corey's got comments about the lighting. So, and, and he spent a lot of time on, he, and he agrees that we need a standalone chapter. So, he's watching and letting us, letting me know.
Mr. McCormick, do we anticipate that we will have a meeting next month?
Um, so I was looking at the calendar today, because a lot of times our deadlines are the same day as the meeting. Apparently, it's not the same day as today. I don't really know why I did that, but I did, so, or I won't know till Monday if we have any cases. Um, if we don't have any cases, our meeting would be the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, that's what I've got.
And I, if we had to have a meeting, we could have a meeting. And if we, and if we don't have any cases, it'd probably be just like tonight, and it probably wouldn't be a lengthy one.
Yeah.
Because I'm gonna be out of town the next day. Actually, the next two days after that, so. I'd be a huge fan of, of not being here late that night.
We try to accommodate that.
Yeah. I don't think we're gonna get anything. We have some stuff that's kind of floating out there, but most of what I'm thinking of that's coming in is more likely to come in later. Um, we do have some potential rezones that are coming in. We have some other stuff that may go to the trustees. The timing of that is somewhat dependent upon what's going on with getting projects together, um, just on the middle side, and then part of that is the, um, you know, sometimes people are kind of leary with market conditions a little bit. So, we'll see. I, we, we have a number of projects people talk to us about. We may yet see that Renew project come back. That guy emailed me today, and I haven't responded to him yet. I traded phone calls with him, and he never called me back, and then he finally emailed me. So, that site on one twenty-five.
That multifamily expansion?
Yeah, so I gotta get back with him, and that one could still come back, and there might be a chance, and I'm gonna talk to him. There, I had heard that there might be a chance that the property to the east could be maybe in play to be bought. And that that was, that would make that property way easier to do something there anyways, because it's so long and narrow. And if not them, then I had other people that I was gonna send to them for the same thing, you know, taking a look at it for, not exactly the same purpose, but still like living units. So, yeah, I should know more about that in the next day or two, when I, my, hopefully I can connect with him. So they're still, they're still around. I initially thought when I saw his email that he was, that project might be gone and they moved on, but then I saw a little bit more of it, and I was like, okay, he's wanting me to write him rather than call him, and I had called him, but he wasn't, we were missing each other. So. So the state didn't give them a favorable answer on that access like they wanted, is what it came down to. So he's looking for guidance on what to do. I don't know how much I can really help him with that, but.
Well, that's right. There was access from one twenty-five that
Yeah, but if they were able to talk to the people on the east about acquiring some more land, that might take care of some of that problem.
I don't know if there's another parcel that's in the way before, because I think if he's trying to go east to connect to the one that goes to WT Park or whatever it is back in there.
There, you can't go all the way to WT, but you can go, I think there's just someone that owns two pieces there.
Right.
And I, that might be an option.
So fair to say next month is a solid maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and then, if, if for some reason we don't have it in, um, May, I would say we're gonna have one in the next two months. The other one would be the twenty-fifth, and I don't have any conflict around that one, so. I can do the one in May as far as that goes, but it's just a matter of getting everything together, and if we have any cases coming between now and Monday, because I had it on my calendar, like, you know, on Monday if we have anything. And then, of course, if you guys think of anything between now and the next few days, or even between now and the next meeting, feel free to let me know. I, I just keep a running list, and we have no shortage of things I'm sure we could add or talk about.
There's a chance I could be out of town for the May meeting. I, I, I'll be able to let you know. If we turn out to have a meeting, I'll, I'll know, but I'm, like, I might be out of town.
Okay.
Coming back from Michigan earlier in that day, so should be here, but.
I'm here.
Were there any other, uh, things that you want to talk about in the administrative section as far as upcoming, uh,
No, I, uh, I think that we will have some things that we're working on that you might be interested in, that might, we'll have a lot more information about probably by May. I sure hope we, we've got at least one of the two things I'm thinking of more underway by then, but we'll see where we're at.
Did you say earlier in the meeting that the Cleanse the Witherswell Overpass could be finished by somewhere between July and October of this year?
It, it won't be completely finished, but I think they'll have it open, um, by, part of it will be open by Ju- July, and I think the majority of it, it'll be like October.
Okay.
At the, I think, more at the latest Thanksgiving, and then after that, it's really more like the cleanup stuff that they have to do. They'll spill over into the spring. Kind of like what they did on Old Seventy-four, you know how it took them a while? That's what they're, that's what they're saying, which are, the schedule got pushed back anyway, so. I haven't looked at it for a week or two, but it looked like they were doing, making pretty good progress on it.
Moving an awful lot of earth.
Yeah.
Off those ramps. Man, that's a good building. All righty, if that's it, then
I have a, a quick comment. I just, uh, I did attend the Allure Planning Workshop over at Anderson Township.
Yeah, we were.
Okay, I was gonna say it was a great workshop, and I enjoyed it, and, um, I'm just throwing it out there for, for next year, if you guys didn't attend, I strongly recommend it.
It was, yeah, it was definitely worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good program.
It was excellent programming, so it was very nice of the township to make us aware of that and to accommodate us. It, it really was eye-opening that I was, um, we did split up and saw different speakers, and I was very impressed by the quality of speakers that were, uh, that were there. And we got to nerd out with some fellow zoning enthusiasts.
That's right.
Uh, all very friendly people. So we, we had quite a good time, and I think we've carried with us some good information to bring back to the township, including, uh, Mr. Outrich's, uh, OKI endeavors. That, that website is such a resource for everyone, and it's terrific in that it's free and available to everybody, which is quite something, and not something you necessarily see in my professional field, so. So that's quite, it's quite a resource source, so.
Yes.
It was fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of neat apps or, um, resources on Yeah, there's a lot of neat apps or, um, resources on OKI's website. I mean, even when I was on the board, it's hard for me to keep up with them, but, um, yeah, there's definitely some cool resources there, so...
I will share that that did receive a federal accommodation.
Oh, yeah?
From the PA. So that's a pretty nice honor.
I need to play around with what you were talking about because I haven't looked at that one yet, but I was one of the people that helped set up the fiscal impact analysis model when it first got started.
Nice.
And then, um, I've used a couple of other things. That Environmental Viewer is pretty useful. I still use it from time to time.
Nice.
Um, you know, if you want to check in general if there's a endangered species or something else, that, that's a quick reference for you to use. There's all kinds of like little neat apps and things there.
All right. All right, before I close the meeting, I, I do just want to, one more time reference. I miss Bill Shannon. Uh, I, I wish him well on his adventure that he's embarked on, and I don't know what that adventure is and where we all go, but I wish him and his family well. And I do miss Bill and I am grateful for the time we had to, that we were able to spend with him.
Yeah. If, if, if the gratitude of this commission could be made clear in the, the minutes of this meeting to Mr. Shannon, he dedicated a considerable amount of time to this commission over the course of multiple decades, and he will be sorely missed.
Thank you.
And we are deeply grateful for that.
Yeah, I know he, um, his daughter called me and told me, and, um, I know she talked to Scott because she said he had dealt with Scott for a long time. And so I know Scott talked to him, but, um, if there's a way for us maybe to get in touch with his family, we can maybe, you know, send something in the way of appreciation for them. I know the township had a presence at his funeral and so forth. I was out of town in Florida, yeah, so I couldn't go.
Right.
But, um, you know, yeah, we can still do something.
I left a message for his family at the, at the funeral from, from us, from the zoning commission and was grateful for all his time and community service.
Mr. Wright attended the visitation. Mr. Lewis and myself were there. The township was certainly represented and briefly spoke with his, with his daughter.
Yeah.
Bill will be greatly missed and, uh, I know wherever he is now, he's got a snap rim hat on, if not a reds cap.
Yeah, it's probably a reds cap.
It is baseball season. And he's got an attache case with him, so...
He's got that grin on his face.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. But we, he will be sorely missed and we are forever indebted to his service and the township should recognize that.
I agree. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, this meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-three PM.
All right.